... July 1st, the Village Board of Trustees will start with the first.
... The United States of America, the Republic of the Philippines, our nation, America, and therefore, the great success of our.
... Judge Paul Roll?
Justice Gray?
Yes.
Justice Volotra?
Here.
Justice Tangerio?
Here.
Justice Brazil?
Here.
Okay, we're gonna change our usual order and be privy to the order later. The first item is the recognition of Kathy Busher for 25 years of service. Kathy Busher. I'll do it on the side if I can't get over there. So, we have a couple of proclamations. As Kathy Busher began working for the Village of Scotia as typist of the Department of Public Works on June 20, 1994, Kathy Busher served as the voice of the department for the last 25 years, answering phones and talking to residents, motorists, and other employees, vendors, and contractors in a professional and pleasant manner. As Kathy Busher has developed her role in the department to much more than what was required when she was hired as the typist, embracing computer programs and new technologies to help advance the department that we're in today. As Kathy Busher always brings in the best candy for the candy jar and is always ready with government nits when needed. Whereas Kathy Busher is proven to be an invaluable employee and is an example of why the Village of Scotia is a special place to live and work, and why the employees of the village are truly the family. Now, there are four in the Village of Scotia here who recognize Kathy Busher for 25 years of dedicated service. That's the best thing that I've seen from my comp. It's a council mayor.
Thank you.
And she's also a neighbor of mine. So, the next order of business is a shield presentation by Jared Conkles. You assume you have that too?
So, Jared was sworn in.
If you guys want to go around and take pictures, it's fine. There's no particular point.
Jared was sworn in back in January. He went to the academy for almost six months. He graduated on Monday. I'm sure he thinks after six long months, and he was chosen as one of the session's squad leaders, so he had a leadership role in the academy, which we are always happy to have one of our recruits have a leadership role in the academy. He's in the midst of his field training now, and that'll go through September, and right around October 1st is when he will be cut loose and banished most likely off to midnight shift for who knows how long. But, he'll be ready to go, and so far, he's done a great job, and eager to learn, and very conscientious, so we're glad to have Jared amongst our ranks now, and honored at the end of the academy to show our appreciation for what he's accomplished so far. We always do the badge ceremony for the new people coming out. So, he's been assigned badge number 29, and here to finish badge are his boy Krista and his son Leo.
Leo's trying.
Leo's not gonna come along now.
Excuse me.
Can you guys get into that, so I can get a picture? So typically, in these meetings, we tell people that they're welcome to stay after the formalities here, but you're also welcome to go, pause for a few minutes to give you that opportunity if you want to. Our meetings are exciting, but you don't have to stay. We have Johnny, who's on the side after, step up to the podium there. We lost our stand, so you can have a whole flight.
Yes, my name is Johnny Eaton. I live at 416 Riverside Avenue. I'm here to report complaint about zoning issue. I have written to the inspector, I've written to the zoning board, I've written to the mayor, and I've met with the mayor concerning what goes on 413 Riverside Avenue, directly across the street from my home. The gentleman at this property is running a lawn care and equipment service business that's been going on for months and months. I have complained about it, no action's been taken. It's unbelievable. There's equipment coming and going to this property to repair. There's a commercial-sized trailer with equipment that goes in and out several times a day. My wife and I are trying to enjoy our retirement directly across the street from this place, and it's just getting very difficult to enjoy it. I'd like to know if we have zoning ordinances, are they gonna be enforced? If they're not gonna be enforced, then we don't have zoning ordinances. That's all I have to say. Am I done?
Have you spoken to the mayor about it?
The mayor actually, yeah, the mayor actually came to my home, and I appreciate that, a real deal. But, I'd like to see some action regarding the zoning organization. I can say, either we have the ordinances or we don't.
Yeah, I will, I'll speak to the village inspector about it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to be heard if he lives in the floor?
Hi, I'm Sid, is your name?
I'm Sal Zarelli, and I live at 115 First Street.
To Zarelli?
Zarelli.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted, I'm not sure if this is the proper format or place to do this, but you guys signed and agreed to law number 1-2019, which is to raise the local tax above the state cap. And, I just want to put it out there that the taxes that we pay in Scotia are high enough, and, you know, we were all promised taxes would lower when the casino came in this connected economy, right? My mother-in-law has a house in Clifton Park that's 4,000 square foot with two acres of land, and she pays less than I do. I live on a 40 by 150-foot lot. The taxes I'm gonna pay this year, I have to work 260 hours in order to pay. This is ridiculous. I, I can't even, I can't even tell you how ridiculous this is. My assessment on my house, I can't even lie and say that I should get the steps lower because I paid more than what it's worth, and I value my house more than what the assessment is. This is, I don't know why you guys voted this in, and I know that it was a 60% vote to get it in, but I don't know who did vote, but thank you for that. You know, who voted against it, thank you. But whoever did, I'm telling you the truth, you're ruining Scotia for me. This is crazy. I, Glendale, if I moved magically my house to Glendale, I'd pay $4,000. Now, I'm paying almost $8,000. This is unbelievable. I don't know what you guys did from last year to this year because everything jumped. I mean, I'm, I'll put it like this, I don't know if I can sell my house because of the tax rate, but if it's not changed, I'm, this is unbelievable. I want to do things in my house and stuff, I can't even afford to. You know, it's, it's not right. I work in construction, and I have to work hard for that, you know, and you're robbing me. So, I don't understand where this, what is so necessary that we need to change things and not only not drop the taxes, but go higher. And you live right down the street from me, so I don't know if you're getting the tax break or what, but I don't know why you guys would vote this in. This is unbelievable.
But this is not the forum to discuss it. We hear your, hear your pain, and I'll talk to you outside, you know, on the screen at some point. We'll go into that if you want, but you know where I live? Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Is anybody else who'd like to be heard in the public hearing? Close that, go onto Local Law Number 2019C, co-member Village Code, relating to branch grass weeds and other vegetation. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard in a public hearing for that? Think I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I have a motion to approve law 2019C?
Make a motion.
Oh, that's, that's, that's happened.
I'll make the motion.
Judge Paul Roll?
Justice Gray?
Yes.
Justice Volotra?
Yes.
Justice Tangerio?
Yes.
Justice Brazil?
Yes.
Yes. On the table, item seven. Item eight, resolution to amend the 2019-20 budget paving allocation for roll over an increase, 851104120 by 40,000 to 95, offset by a decrease to the unbalanced, the 81 balance. Judge Wilson?
Second.
Judge Paul Roll?
Justice Gray?
Yes.
Justice Volotra?
Yes.
Justice Tangerio?
Yes.
Yes. Item nine, authorize surplus Department of Public Works equipment. This is a steel reed blower and a power pruner pole saw. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. No, I just, that might earn us. Okay, item ten. I have a motion to approve the contract for electric vehicle charger, electric installation with NY, did you say it as one word, Nyrear?
Nyrear.
Nyrear, in an amount not to exceed 10,080. Make a motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. Item 11, I have a motion to approve the contract for EV charger hardware with Nyrear in an amount not to exceed 46,15150. Make a motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
So, these two together are, will fund our electric vehicle charger station bigger than we thought, and almost all of that gets reimbursed by the grant. Can you further do a little bit more on that? Appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you. Item 12. Yeah, so, is it two points?
Um, okay, if you want to.
Okay, so, so what we're doing with this one is establishing a new charge for the building department search. Right now, if the building inspector is asked by a title company or a lawyer to check the records of the village or to see if there are any building code violations before a property sale go time, he, he does the search, and he charges like it's a Freedom Information Act request, which is 25 cents. We're talking about establishing an actual charge, building charge for that, the $25. And as part of it, we also, right now, we do tax searches on request from people in the village's office who charge $20. We're proposing to change the tax search rate to $25 also. So, I think, I think it'd be better to do it in two pieces if it's okay. So, can I have a resolution to amend the Village Code to add a municipal building department search charge?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. And then can I have a motion to amend the village fee schedule to charge $25 for building department search and to charge $25 for a tax search?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I think it's important to note, too, that these are for like house sale transactions or individual businesses coming from the city. So, yeah.
It's a part of the business transaction, and it's done about that.
Okay, item 13, we have an application to volunteer fire fighter Leonard Monday. Make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. Item 14, authorize the closure of Almarol Road, a road from Neal Street to Albion Street, and Albion Street from Almarol Road to Marilyn Avenue on Sunday, August 11th, from 9:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night for a block party.
I'll make the motion to close Almarol and the turnaround streets. I just love the names.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close.
Comment that, that business, the hotels, coming to the neighborhood to, to work. Thank them for their love.
Item 15, authorize the closure of Fens Street between Flyer and Houston Street on Saturday, September 21st, from noon until 6:00 p.m. for the meat piece of annual party.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. Item 16, authorize the closure of Robin Street, the dinner portion from J Street, on Saturday, August 3rd, from noon until 9:00 p.m., with the rain date of Saturday, August 4th, or Sunday, August 4th.
Make a motion.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Close. Item 17, we have a resolution to authorize the placement of teal ribbons on decorative plaques that will gather from the month of September in honor of National Mariah Cancer Awareness Month.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. Item 18, to, motion to approve the concept of the Fire District Form Contract with the town of Glendale.
Make a motion for that?
Second.
I'll, our, call roll for that.
Justice Gray?
Yes.
Justice Volotra?
Yes.
Justice Tangerio?
Yes.
Yes. Item 19, mayor's comments to the board. So, Freedom Park is open. We should encourage people to go. Announced the concept last week, and it was a fun, beautiful night. The Public Works Department has been going apace. They had a big water main break while I was away, and I understand that Andy worked for 18 hours, they cleaned up, 18 hours straight. They, they got it done and threw it back together. The Police Department, we already know about their new officer. Fire Department, we have a new, new fireman onboard, back from the academy last week, Alex Lopshinsky. He seems to be working well to be, not fully in service yet, but he's getting there. Full house, they've got a student archaeological dig next to the house there. The kids were there taking little truffles and trying to be very careful in digging up little plastic bits of bottles. Not old, but they weren't very deep yet, but.
Overwatch after the war.
Yeah. Our, our building study is going on. I saw the, a couple of kids from the architectural firm were here measuring everything, every, inside and out all over, so we're moving on to that, and I understand they're getting closer to recommending the location to us. Sidewalks, there are, sidewalk committee has given me another list of sidewalks, and I sent out a bunch of letters, and some people have actually started fixing them. I'm not completely happy with the process in a room. And the other sidewalk issue, we had a meeting this morning with the school, the town of Glendale, about putting, putting a sidewalk along Broad Street. The supervisor thinks we've got good chance of a grant, a paper, all of that, and it may include going along Sealy Street too. It probably won't happen this year, but we've got a lot of people interested in it, so those are my comments. For respondents, the Anton Special Committee report.
We had a good meeting, very well attended. We got a presentation by CGI who is doing the video. We're doing a video tour of the village. It'll be available on the village website, and you'll get free charge to the village, and it'll advertise other, the local businesses have the opportunity to link to their page or videos off of our village website. Someone searches Village of Scotia, you'll eventually be able to go to, you know, Story Coffee or Turf Tavern through that, right to that site, so that's really nice. They're excited about that. There was a zoning board meeting, but the mayor covered for me, and I was a little busy. Mental health at that.
We just approved a Marion Sun Fly Road, it's a various, simple, simple deal.
And the block guy?
Joe?
We did have a car show. Unfortunately, it was very short-lived because of the weather, the rain.
Fair.
Most of our participants didn't get trophies for staying in the rain. And now, I think we are looking him to Hollywood Avenue. We're starting to get ready to get up again and figure out where we're gonna push for that, and that's coming up, so it's all happening for him.
With regards to the taxes, the village is still cutting taxes. Next Wednesday, hoping that Glendale meeting, and I will be attending that next Wednesday. I just want to congratulate Mr. Tangerio on the work of his son, and also wish good luck to the new officers.
Another busy month, the planning board met and approved a couple of projects going on. Paul Shave is doing some expansion to a storage unit and replacing his storage business on Fly Road, and he's making some adjustments there, so I'm glad to see he's investing in the village, doing business down. Orlando Dance Studio is coming in too as well, their recruit. We also discussed the approval by Metroplex to fund some projects here on the corner of 550 to do some improvements and some renovations and rehabilitation there, so looking forward to partnering with Metroplex to work on that, that process. We've been discussing solar issues with the county, which is a great thing, it should benefit the village on a municipal level. They're also looking offering for the residents to participate in some cost-sharing measures on their utility bills. Speaking with the Parks Department, starting to have discussions with the county about some more funding that could very well turn out to augmenting some of the facilities in the park, you know, possibly creating some more parking spots and capable parking for park events and park resources, so that's a great thing. The park's been relatively, could be served a little bit more with some of the resources they work, so we're looking forward to doing that, partnering with the county. And, that's it. I also congratulate Tom, congratulate the new police officer and firefighter, and looking forward to having our village be protected in the best way possible, so thank you.
Thank you. Item 21, the departmental reports. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Well, thanks, all favor?
Aye.
Item 22, a lot of the clients, have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Judge Paul Roll?
Justice Tangerio?
Yes.
Justice Brazil?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Item 23, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8 meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. Item 24, have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 29?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item 25, have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 4 meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of June 14?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item 26, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 12 meeting? That's the, that's a special, special meeting, yes, first.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the June 12 special meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item 27, have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 12 regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item 28, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 26 meeting? Special.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the June 26 meeting?
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item 29, does anybody have any new business for the village?
Yes, I've got some good business. I think I'll make the resolution, authorize the change in our village code, ask for the Traffic Safety Committee on loan parking signs for the CVS store. That was approved by the planning board. And again, it's been one other situation, there was a car parked over there, and they opened the door, and we got dragged off, so I think this is, we need to act on this.
Are you gonna, are you gonna tell them?
No, I didn't get that.
Again, I'd like to do that in the work session in the next week or the week after. I propose the date after from anybody, but I'd like to have a conversation on that rather than start it here. It won't change the schedule of anything.
I'll, I'll second the resolution, Joe. Section 240-9, 240-11, 240-16, 240-17, and the, another amendment to section 240. I agree with Joe, we need to move this process forward. We can still have that work session, special meeting. This starts the process, and then the public council will follow after. This starts the process, and then the public council will follow that, but it can be changed anytime from here on out, but it really is a safety concern. We need to trust in the professionals that made up the proposal from the traffic safety committee, as it was discussed two different times and approved in twenty sixteen, it's just revised in current, so I will second that resolution and look forward to a discussion moving forward this month.
Any other form of evidence?
So, are we introducing the local law as originally proposed by that same?
Yes, introducing the revision to chapter two forty as described in two different legislation drafts by the traffic safety committee presented in April.
They're ready.
The ones that were, yeah. So, they will grab legislation number two, number one.
Correct.
Remember what letter we're on now. Most of us, we have to meet tonight, so they need to introduce it in a public hearing.
Well, we got changes in our code.
Yeah, I mean, the public hearing happens, I've been actually, this has happened first in the year, so.
Introduce it tonight, have a public hearing, that's right.
Sure.
Okay.
Read the papers.
Dusty Gray? Yes, Dusty Dela?
Yes.
Dusty Takerio?
Yes.
Dusty Dela?
Yes.
There.
So, have you had any response with the, with the work session? Any, I can't read it.
Monday would be better, if possible. This is all right.
I propose the twenty-third. Would be better than the twenty-second, or you want?
If possible, Monday's better.
What?
Mon, Monday's easier for me, switch it off.
What do you have?
I'm asking.
Monday's good for me.
What time?
Come there twice, I would say.
Huh?
Do I have a second?
Yeah. Do you have any accident statistics for that intersection? If you can get to us for that meeting?
For which meeting? We don't have a lot of accidents there. At fifty and five?
No, one forty-seven and five.
I can, but I don't, off the top of my head.
The other one's being studied already professionally, but we don't have any, we don't have any data on this other intersection at all.
We, I can look it up, but I can tell you off the top of my head, there aren't any.
Okay.
It's more for the, for the fire trucks and.
It's more for the turning radius, yeah.
And I think it's more of a safety issue, too, on that parking issue. Again, last week, I seen a person parking at, opening the door, and a guy had swerved into other lane to avoid that situation, so.
Well, I think what within the traffic safety committee was pretty specific back in twenty sixteen.
Right.
When CBS applied for the building permit, and those were the requirements we wanted, so it enhanced the line of sight. If they wanted a left turn to go west on Mohawk, to allow parking along that area, you're not going to have that. And that was one of the requirements that planning board approved, and then the board trustees sitting at the time approved, and then all of the other reasons we brought up were all detailed, and why we thought that that particular area should be no standing.
It was also approved by the planning board, wasn't it?
Yes, planning board and the board of trustees.
Okay, any new misses? Have a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.